Call to order for the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting, Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. If I could get a roll call, please.
Diane Johnson.
Here.
Zimmerman. Chad Johnson.
Here.
Jepson.
Here.
Nobak.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion.
Motion from Lisa.
Second.
We'll give the second to Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Uh, gets us to our public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than thirty minutes in total length. Each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Tonight, Aaron McMahon, the Fair and Text Amendment.
Hi, Aaron McMahon, Hoffman Street. I was planning on coming tonight, but I got a call right before I came from Tim Schwartz of the PCA. Apparently, the city is also, also has this information, but he let me know how the study went for the monster truck event on September 13th. Um, Tim, um, the PCA was so kind as to drive down their equipment this time. Um, two years ago, two summers ago, um, they offered to coordinate um, an equipment drop with the city, but the city ignored those requests. So they dropped it down. John was not in, John was not, um, the administrator at the time. Um, so, um, the measurements were completed, and I believe they were either completed at, uh, the swimming pool parking lot or, um, a residence close by. According to Tim, um, they measured during the matinee, and they measured, uh, during the evening. During the matinee measurement, the total time they measured was forty-seven minutes, and the total time they measured, um, during the evening event was fifty-seven minutes. With regard to the noise standards, classification, and descriptions, an L-ten indicates that the noise exceeded, exceeded statute levels ten percent of the time. An L-50 indicates that the noise exceeded state statute levels fifty percent of the time. For the L-ten or ten percent, um, reading, a PCA DL standard is sixty-five. Again, the L-ten exceeds state statute, statute levels ten percent of the time. The PCA DL standard is sixty-five. The pre-event baseline measurement for noise was below that, fifty-eight point nine percent. The matinee measurement was a hundred and five point nine. The evening measurement was one twenty-five. Again, the standard is sixty-five. The L-50 classification means that the noise exceeded state statutes level, levels fifty percent of this time. The PCA DL standard is sixty. The pre-event baseline measurement was fifty-five point five. The matinee measurement was ninety-seven point five. The evening measurement was one hundred and nineteen point five. Again, the standard is sixty for fifty percent of the time. Tim, Tim did have some caveats. Um, again, the measurement was under an hour, but he said that wouldn't affect the analysis. And he said that the wind speed may have had an impact, but we don't know if that impact would have been to lower the, the, the measurement, or the, the data, or to raise it. So I think it's really unfortunate that we didn't have this information for the recent Planning Commission meeting. And I'd like to just express one more time that that text amendment does not need to be rewritten. They don't need a, a, a classification, a new classification. Um, perhaps the city would consider doing an overlay, a zoning overlay during July first through sixth, where the Cannon Valley Fair can have their event at the Cannon Valley Fair, and there can be noise. But other than that, there's actually no reason to change the zoning ordinance. Period. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have a presentation, uh, Good Hugh County Solid Waste, and Dick Thompson is here.
Hello. Thank you very much for giving me this time.
Do you need the camera right there? There we go.
Yeah. I'll start with this one. This is just an overview. I don't know if you, it's laminated, so it's, there we go.
A little shiny. There we go.
All right, that's a, that's a twenty-yard container, and we empty those. Now, we're up to four days a week. When I arrived, um, with Good Hugh County back in, um, back in April, we were at three days a week, but we, and we were compressing these down three or four times with a skid loader. So we're packing them very, very tight. So I had to increase to four days because we were just getting so much garbage in. Now, this is, this consists of more than just, that isn't all Cannon Falls. I want you to understand that. That is a twenty-yarder, and, and so that's basically, we're filling almost a day, uh, one, one a day, almost. So, um, it's increased rapidly, not just here in Cannon Falls, but also, um, another area that we have issues with is, is, um, Pine Island. So those two are pretty consistent in that where it's, we have compartments in our, in our roll-offs, and they're, they're separated by the glass, paper, cardboard, aluminum. And it seems like the one that's, um, usually violated, if you will, the most is the compartment that holds the plastic. That usually is where, well, that's understandable, because, you know, people think, well, I can throw a milk jug in there, I might as well throw the plastic pull in there as well. Obviously, that's, they're not, not, not both of those are recyclable, because the only thing we res, we can recycle are ones and twos, and that's your typical water bottle, and most of the bottles that hold juices and that kind of thing. Outside of that, milk, milk jugs are, would be the next category, too. Um, coffee cans, those type of things. That's about it. So we're very limited, and I, and that's probably what most people don't understand, that we, we, we really can't recycle more than the ones and twos. Um, they're just not recyclable. So that's, it's all understandable why the plastics are a little more so than the others. We did have an exception, though, here recently. I, I did a isolated picture shot of a couple of our containers a couple of weeks ago from here in Cannon. And this is strictly Cannon Falls. And what I'm showing you here, all this came out of our newspaper compartment, which is one of our smaller compartments. And inside there, you probably aren't going to be able to see it. I'll show you a couple of pictures here, but inside there are two, are our four brake rotors from a car, of all things. Um, in that same container that day, we had, and we've kind of seen a trend. The guys separate these, so they, they do see the trends. It's the same guy separating these all the time. So, so they're going to see the trends. And a trend that they see is a lot of, um, diaper-related, adult diaper-related, um, chucks and those kind of things that are going in these same-colored garbage bags. And you see them right there, the gray ones. Those are all full of those chucks. And the guy who we're, who, um, picked up this particular day, this is what he found here on the outside. Those are plastic containers, obviously, from plants. Somebody realized they're not recyclable, so I can't put them in the container, but I'll just leave them outside. So obviously, somebody who did that, they knew that wasn't recyclable. And there gives you, this gives you a little bit idea, a better idea of some of the different plastics that we can't take. And again, the plastics, we, we have a little more understanding where people might question, well, if they can take one kind of plastic, why can't they take all? We can understand that. Um, here's the last one. Again, I sho, I showed another close-up of, of those, of those bags. So the, the breakdown, what we're, what, what our cost is right now, it's roughly about five hundred and thirty-eight dollars every week. My best estimate is, is, um, between, Pine Island is probably a third of that, Cannon Falls is probably a third of that. So most of our garbage is coming from these two locations, and it's because they're, they're really the most active. And that's a good thing. I mean, the, the residents are using them. That's good. That's what we want. But what, what I, what we would like to see is just maybe some kind of communication, some marketing, whatever, directed to what we, and they can go directly to our site to see what they, to what's acceptable and what's not. So if there's any way you could help us out with that kind of marketing, that kind of thing, I'll do what I can on my end, and I, and I, and I've had some luck. Uh, when I got there, I started, I didn't print some, any, any professional signage right, right at first. I wanted to see what verbiage worked, so I just kind of changed it in and out every, every week or so. And it did work. It did work. I, what, because what I was trying to targeting there was to, for them to break down the cardboard. And my objective was break down the cardboard. I don't have to put as many containers out, don't have to process as often. By doing that, I eliminated weekends, so my guys didn't have to work on the weekends. It worked in a matter of three weeks. So I know that the, I know that just changing the, the, um, verbiage and the communication helps. So, and I'm just basically going for that middle group of people, because you're going to have your ten percent, no matter what we do, they're going to keep doing what they do. Probably got another twenty percent, probably always going to do the right thing, because we've got some people who, in Red Wing, they're really, they are very conscientious about recycling. They are. And then the middle group, that's the one I want to, if I could just reduce, reduce that group by about a third, we'll be happy, because we're never going to eliminate all this, and I don't expect to. Any assistance would be appreciated. Thank you. Sure.
You say plastic recycling, one and two are okay?
Yeah, they're okay.
Okay.
The bad thing about it is, and I wish, I wish the, um, manufacturers were forced to, um, when they print these on the bottom, they're going to, they're going to try and go like this. You can barely read the one and two. You can barely read it. So it's very difficult. So again, we understand why the plastic's a bit of an issue. Any other questions?
Milk curtains? Not the, um, plastic milk jugs, but you know, the, like, cardboard-type ones. Are they, can they, or can they not?
Now, are the cardboard ones? No.
Okay.
Nope, not recyclable. Nope, unfortunately.
I've heard, I've heard people tell me both ways, and I thought I would ask.
Yeah, that's just garbage.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I guess, Mike, if I have a question, it's probably for our staff, but don't we have, uh, cameras down there? So if we have repeat offenders, we probably find out who those people are, and I don't know.
So we don't have cameras down there. We, the fair has a camera kind of pointing at it. Um, we don't have Wi-Fi over there, so there's not any way for us to actually have cameras over there.
All right.
I think that, I think their, Jed and I, I think we did speak that there has been a couple situations where, where somehow they got, the fair board got, got a shot, and they put them on Facebook, so.
Sure.
I mean, that's nice if they can do that every now and then. That helps, especially the atrocious ones.
Camera at the pool, too. I'd think something could be done. We got the pool. Oh, I don't know. We'll talk about that.
Yep.
All right.
Thanks again for your time. John, Jed, appreciate it.
Thanks, Dick. All right, that brings us to tonight's consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. Uh, item A, just incorrect claims, accounting period ending November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Item B, meeting minutes, November fifth, uh, twenty twenty-five, City Council. C, second reading and adoption of ordinance four-one-two, an ordinance of the City of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, to amend Cannon Falls zoning ordinance by amending a zoning district. Item D, resolution two-eight-four-five, authorizing twenty-twenty-six city license renewals. Item E, approve the WWTP headworks engineers report. Item F, approve final pay request for the twenty-twenty-five street maintenance project. Item G, approve purchase of an IV infusion pump for ambulance department. Item H, approve hiring of part-time paramedic. And item I, approve twenty-twenty-six agreement for state building code administration. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
Uh, E?
Item E. Okay. Item E will become city business. Item A. Anything else from the council? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion from Lisa.
Second.
Second from Jep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Gets us on to city business, which was item E. It's now item A. Chad?
Um, it's a very simple question, really, but we're just approving the report, right? And then we want actions, because there's a lot of action items there. Those will then be voted on, on what comes first in priority?
Yeah, that, so, and Bill can answer this more, but in the next meeting, we actually have, will have proposals available for some of the actions that we're going to take to, for the first levels of, of work that we want to have approved. So in aligning the project with what we have for resources within the budget, um, part of our conversation was doing the, uh, planning and design work for, for this, so that we could then, um, do a bigger project in twenty twenty-seven and have the resources available to cover those costs for that, for that first part of the project, mainly the, the headworks of the wastewater treatment plant. So when you toured, that's the, you know, the conveyor for the grit screen removal, that piece of equipment was something that we talked about earlier on in the summer in our budget planning as, as replacement, replacing, and we did have funds, uh, set aside in the preliminary budget for that project. Um, in the evaluation, looking at, there's a lot more needs that also need to be addressed into that building. Um, we believe that we can kind of keep that, have that, you know, limped along up until the point where we just do kind of that whole building all together comprehensively.
Yeah, because I saw we had fair, good, you know, like, for the order, and if we don't start them for two years, you know, those things might change. So I just wanted to make sure we're not.
Yeah, so the expectation, yeah, so the timing of it would be plan, design, bid in the fall, start project early, and since this is more of an interior project, it's probably something that might be attractive for a contractor to work on in the winter.
Okay. Well, then, I, I have no issues with it. That's basically all I wanted to know.
Sounds good. All right.
I'd just like to say, uh, beautiful job on doing that report. It was very helpful. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Pictures tell a good story.
Uh, with that said, I would entertain a motion to approve item A, the wastewater treatment facility headworks engineers report.
So moved.
Motion from Diane.
Second.
Second from Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That passes. That gets us to... Do we want to do reports first? Let's do reports. Uh, no Maggie. EDA met on November sixth. John, do you mind taking that one? Because Laura is not here.
Yeah, so, uh, EDA, um, actually quite, had quite extensive, uh, meeting on that. Uh, excuse me, let me pull it up so I have it ready. I wasn't prepared for that.
Sorry, I was absent from that as well.
All right, so, um, Laura discussed the loan fund, where we're at in that stance. Uh, we had one, uh, I do believe loan that is behind, but it's kind of a common practice. They get behind, get caught up, and then, you know, end up there a couple months later. Um, the small-town grant from Smith, uh, was for... Oh, here we go. Eight thousand dollars, uh, for a small-town grant, uh, to develop and create, uh, welcome packets. Um, I know that Laura, uh, primarily used some, gives them to the, uh, realtors, uh, so they can use them for closings for the people in hardwood estates, because, uh, we have been getting quite a few that are, you know, some boomerangs, so they are coming back to the community, but quite a few people that are new to the community, as well as up at Timber Ridge, we've seen some more activity, and the Cannonball Apartments are doing that. And then it's going to be in a partnership with, uh, uh, students for Amy Dombeck's class at the, at the school to, to help with that design. I believe, uh, Abby Repke was one of them that's helping out with that project. Uh, then on hardwood, um, no activity. We haven't had any lot, additional lot sales or closings on the sec, the second, um, uh, part, but the, which is the first, uh, phase of the project, but the second phase, third edition, is, is going. Construction has been, has been active, uh, out there. So if you have seen, they've, they've moved a lot of dirt, put in, in pipes, so we had some fortunate, good weather to, to do that. Uh, then she discussed the, the contract, uh, and the board made a couple, um, modifications to the SEDA contract language to, um, to kind of build, build out, make it more current to the work that, that Laura's doing, but that contract was, um, recommended for approval. And then we, I gave my presentation, uh, some, summary presentation about the, the data center, Technology Park, that would, happened at the previous, uh, council meeting. Um, and then Laura spoke about the, uh, IG industry cluster, uh, and, uh, meeting that she had. It was really focused on Cannon Falls things, but the person that was organizing it through USDA scheduled the meeting stuff all in Red Wing, so they were hoping to do some tours over here afterwards, but I think there was a little bit of coordination questions. But Laura said it, when she was there, it went really well. There was a lot of, a lot of positive, uh, feedback about the, the things that are going on, and, and just a lot of praise to the, uh, food systems and interconnection that are happening around this Cannon Falls area. And I'll attest to that as well, having, um, done some of that work up in my previous community, uh, working with other organizations. I, I do believe you're, you're ahead of the game for your, where we were trying to get to. So, so kudos to the, this community for, for the efforts that they've made on that front.
Awesome. Thank you, John. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission met on November tenth.
Um, we had a very lively discussion about the proposed fair zoning text amendment. Um, and after a lot of information shared on all different sides, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, voted to, uh, postpone, or however one says it correctly, the issue to the December meeting. And, uh, I know a couple members and our city administrator attended the fair board meeting last night, um, as they invited us, and, um, and that was another good discussion, so.
All right. Thanks, Diane. We'll go around the horn. Jed?
We almost got snow today. Um, we were prepared. Uh, all the plows were already hooked up, but thank goodness we didn't get anything. Um, but just want to remind people that as winter is coming, to observe the, especially if we get, uh, s, uh, plowable snow, that not to park on the streets at night, so that, uh, public works can get out and get the roads clear. Um, and then I'd like to just shout out to my, my street screw, uh, street and park screw, the, the lights downtown, the, the changes we made. I think they look amazing. I understand we don't have the garland, but I think we definitely did a good job at the change, the changes that they did make.
Yeah. I know we've got, I've heard a lot of good things about, uh, the city parking lot, the extra lights in the trees. That's really nice. Yeah. Thanks, Jed. Bill?
Nothing to nightmare, unless you have any questions.
We're good. Izzy? Nothing? Chief?
Deck the Falls will be coming up on the twenty-ninth. Um, really doesn't have much of an impact on, uh, parking restrictions and stuff, since we try to just utilize the roadway rather than closing the road off.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but just for the residents, it may be a little bit of delay, especially in the Mill Street, um, city lot area. So if you're planning to come, just come early, dress warm, uh, watch the parade, then hang around for the, uh, the lighting in the tree.
Yeah. Sarah? John?
Well, Aaron stole my thunder. I was going to talk about the sound study reports. Um, yeah, so we did finally get that, that back. It also in, included the, um, evaluation for the IUP that was approved. That was part of, uh, contingency for that IUP. Um, didn't, didn't have a formal, uh, response to it, because I was still waiting for additional feedback from MPCA. Um, we do, you know, there was some back and forth communication about that today in terms of the validity of that, of those studies. Uh, we do believe that information is, is valid, but if we were trying to enforce this in a, you know, legal capacity, that, you know, if we didn't meet the standard for an hour-long test, um, which is what the, uh, state law, uh, requires, I mean, they were for forty-seven minutes was the shortest one. A couple of the others were, were right about that hour timeframe, maybe a little bit under. And some of the other, um, environmental circumstances, like the wind speed, were, were off. But we do believe that the numbers to be pretty close to the, to the action in reality, uh, for that. Um, I would say the, there was a little bit of a misunderstanding, I think, with Aaron's explanation. One of the study locations, she quoted numbers for matinee show and evening show. That was actually for the evening show in two different locations. So those, both those high decimal numbers were just during the evening time for that event, and, um, uh, the two different locations where they're moving the, the device between. The, the matinee show didn't actually have recorded any, uh, or did not exceed the state standard. So trying to kind of figure out how they were so different, uh, between the day, but I wasn't, uh, I wasn't in town during that event, so I can't speak to the, to the actuality of, of how that happened. Um, but I did share that information with, uh, the fair board president as well, um, who, uh, has been very interested in finding out the results, and knowing that have committed that, you know, event like that is probably not going to be something that they're going to request. And I think it provides some good understanding to how noise travels in that area. So we're both pretty, uh, happy that we got the results back regardless of what they, they indicated. So, um, you know, I can provide more explanation if I get some more finer details from, from that, but I didn't feel I was in a full capacity to explain how, how all these numbers actually are, are calculated, and they, they work. Um, with that, and too, we had a finance committee right before the council tonight, and spoke about, uh, one next council meeting, we'll have an upcoming budget transfer resolution. Um, there are some changes to that in terms of what we originally budgeted for, for twenty twenty-five. Um, you know, primarily in the positive, but, uh, you know, gives it, we have found some opportunities because of just the way things were, were calculated before, and that we, in conversation, a lot of conversations with the auditors, that we can kind of change things and, and use some resources in a little different way to, you know, kind of cover some, some current costs, uh, needs, and, uh, offset some, uh, future, future expenses. So, so positive things on, on that front. Uh, and then, uh, just another, uh, couple of quick announcements that, um, we did get word that Shelley Ryan, our attorney through Hoffberry, is going to be, um, leaving the firm at, through, uh, transitioning out at the end of the year. So, uh, we, you know, we'll have to kind of look at what we, we have, but, um, you know, this is not unusual. I mean, usually when you work with a larger firm, um, that tends to happen. Attorneys get cycled out. Some, you may not leave the firm, but they, you know, will take on different cities or different roles. Um, so they do have somebody that would be dedicated and, and assigned to us as a, as a replacement. So, um, already been through that once, even with this firm, uh, a couple of years ago. So just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that.
All right. Thanks, John. Laura?
I'm good.
Chris?
Good.
Jep?
Good.
Diane?
Um, I, I, Maggie is also retiring at the end of Maggie.
Yeah.
So, but, so, but anyway.
Yeah, Chamber Director Maggie Wilson, yes, she has, uh, accepted a position. She informed me last week. She's accepted a position with the school and, uh, will be, um, no longer. accepted a position with the school and uh, will be um, no longer working for the chamber after the Deck the Fall, Deck the Falls event.
And I was, I was, and I was going to say, in addition, uh, the Rotary Club is presenting Maggie with the Paul Harris Award at an event this Saturday at six o'clock at Nick Steiner. So anybody who's interested, I can sign you up and make you buy a ticket.
And good, good for Maggie. Go out on top, Maggie. Good job.
Yeah, well, and, and that's it. We did this, obviously, before we knew she was resigning, but it is to honor her work in the community, so.
I like Diane's explanation of volunteering. And I can force you. Uh, Lisa?
I'm good.
Chad?
Um, I guess I was at the monster truck event this uh, summer, and I thought it was good. I just hope we go easy autumn there for a couple of minutes of the entire summertime, but I don't, I, I remember asking the police chief, there was no complaints aside from, you know, people just knew that was a short event this summer, so that's all I got.
All right. Uh, I got nothing. So, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion from Lisa.
Second.
Second from Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.